Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, April 2, 2018. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Tim, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairman. A new Town Manager Report should be my resignation letter as Town Manager and Fire Chief. It will fill the Fire Chief position.
And we're also adding an executive session under 4056A for personnel. And I have an additional adjustment to the agenda, and this is a letter of resignation from Jim Carrigan. He says, "I, James Carrigan, am submitting my letter of resignation as Rangely Selectman. This is effective as of today, April 2, 2018. With deep regrets, Jim Carrigan." So I need a motion to accept Jim's resignation with regret.
I make a motion to accept Jim's resignation with regret.
I'll second that.
So Jim is now a resident of Dallas Plantation. So thank you so much, Jim, for just serving the Board and being you and speaking your honesty and whatnot.
Well, I'd just like to say it was a fun day to work with new people. I know we had our ups and downs, but I think we can all move past that, I hope, and move on and work for the -- I hope you all, you know, you have a lot on your agenda for the next year or so here, things coming up, and I hope you all, you know, get to work together and move forward, and best of luck.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
All those in favor? And that's unanimous. So just to explain to the public the way it goes, when there is a vacancy for an elected official, you can't appoint an elected official. You have to have an election that's already been scheduled. So we'll be working as a four-board member until the first meeting in July. Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm assuming your election's going to be filled with unexpired terms. How much time is there left on that term?
One year.
So it'll be elected for one year?
Yes, yep. And that's already been -- that was made public at our last meeting. Trish has got nomination papers available for anyone who wishes to run for a one-year term or a three-year term.
You thought you didn't have enough to do?
All right, moving on to review and approve meeting minutes. First one is for a regular board meeting dated February 28, 2018.
I make a motion to accept the budget meeting minutes for Wednesday, February 28, 2018, as presented, with any corrections or additions.
Thank you. Shelley's motion, Dave's seconds. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next are the budget meeting minutes for Monday, March 5, 2018.
I would just like to make -- have a correction made on those minutes where the airport 25,000 listed for projects upcoming, and then leave it at that, where there's questions about the parallel taxiway.
All right.
So just the verbiage.
So just airport 25,000 listed projects coming up.
Right.
All right, so a motion for amended budget meeting minutes for Monday, March 5.
Where is that?
Right here. On Rangely Board of Select Persons Budget Meeting Minutes for Monday, March 5, 2018, and this shows the capital reserves and capital purchases. Check behind your -- the second page to the Wednesday, February. It might have not had a separation in it.
Yes, yep. Yep. Put a line through it. All right, so you can make a motion for the --
I make a motion to accept the budget meeting minutes for Monday, March 5, 2018, as presented with the correction just given.
I'll second. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next, moving on to Rangely Board of Select Persons Meeting Minutes for regular meeting minutes for Monday, March 5, 2018.
On the second page, it shows under the moratorium, it says June 12, 2018 to June 13, 2018. Does that need to be amended?
No, it's going to be voted on June 12, and the effective date's going to be June 13.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Then I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for Monday, March 5, 2018, as presented, with any errors or corrections.
Shelley's motion, Dave's seconds. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Lastly, minutes to the Board of Selectmen Budget Meeting Minutes for March 12, 2018.
I make a motion to accept the minutes for the Board of Selectmen Budget for March 12, 2018, as presented, with any errors or corrections.
Shelley's motion.
Second.
And Dave's seconds. All those in favor? All right, that's it for review and approve meeting minutes. Next, public to speak.
19 through 17, we have 19.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for catching me.
I'll go and try to gather.
There it is. Minutes for the Rangely Board of Select Persons Meeting for Monday, March 19, 2018.
I make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes for Monday, March 19, 2018, as presented, with any errors or corrections.
Shelley's motion, Dave's seconds. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. All right. Now, moving on, public to speak on a non-agenda item. Going once. Yep, Steve?
Thank you. Appreciate you taking that quick three minutes last time. I want to start off by saying, thank you to Jim Carrigan for those years of service. For those of us out here who continue to vote for him, I'm glad he did what he did, and he was here as long as he was. It's a difficult position you all fill. I know you can't talk about things that are -- go on with an executive session and things that revolve around personnel policies. So could you tell me how one goes about requesting a further review from -- had the word a few minutes ago, and I've lost obscene moment here. If you make a decision regarding commission members and policies and how they work within those policies, and it has to do with human resources, what is the avenue by which you can appeal that?
That's a good question. So this would have to do with, you know, a matter that Annalee was involved with. So she was an independent investigator, you know, on behalf of the town. I think we'd have to look into it.
I'll have to call her ass.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, the Town Manager will give Annalee a call and find out what, you know, what the next step would be, Steve.
Okay. And in regards to the questions that I left you last meeting, for those questions in there, it was lengthy, and I didn't get an opportunity to finish it. Could you respond to me at some point as to how?
Absolutely. Now that we're done with the budget and --
Yeah, no, I understand your constraints.
Yeah, absolutely.
And certainly no burning desire. I mean, I was very concerned about losing Tim. I think the revolving door policy is pandemic in the state of Maine. You probably all saw it in the newspaper on Sunday. University of Maine has gone through seven presidents in the last 20 years. And I don't think it's a healthy environment. I think when we have somebody that had the qualifications that Mr. Pellerin has had, it's important that we work with him. He brings an awful lot to the plate. It's going to be hard to replace, and I think you're going to find this is going to be strong.
Yeah.
But thank you if I could get those answers. I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Yep, Shelley?
In respect to that, the municipality is the same as the private sector, where everyone's rights are their private. So it's just, it's the same as your employees, the rights that they have is the same as the town. Even though the towns are paid by, technically by the taxpayers, they fall underneath the same protection.
Okay. Can I just clarify with you, Shelley, where I'm going with all of this? When you serve on a board, much like you do, or you're appointed to a board, and you serve, and you give your time to your community, there is an opportunity for having dialogue between those boards that doesn't impede their rights or anything else. We operate under the same confidentiality laws that you do as a Board of Selectmen, and we're expected to keep confidences, but the trust still has to be there, that all the information is shared, and it's not being shared. And I think it's important that that be established so that we can have that dialogue for no other reason other than understanding. And I'm not trying to throw anything out in the public that gets anything going, but, you know, when you ask for something to be done, I think it's important is that dialogue goes back over.
I think Annalee will definitely clarify, be able to clarify that as to what, because, you know, she had let us know what couldn't be shared and how things could move forward from her investigation. Any other public to speak on a non-agenda item? All right, moving on, boards and committees. Are there any boards and committee members here that would like to share updates? Going once. Going twice. Okay. Moving on to Section 6, that's the consent items. We've got a request for appointment to the Airport Commission. Michael Flewelling has submitted a request for appointment, and it looks like the Airport Commission voted on March 26 to accept his request for appointment, and they are recommending that the Board do the same. This is a three-year alternate appointment to expire June 30 of 2021.
I make a motion to accept Michael Flewelling's application for appointment to the Airport Commission for a three-year alternate position, and one is that expires on June 30, 2021.
Shelley's motion and Dave's seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we have a liquor license request from Bald Mountain Camps. And this is a renewal for all three types of liquor and spirits. Looks like all the signatures have been accounted for. And draw a motion.
Make a motion to accept the liquor license for the Bald Mountain Camps.
Shelley's motion?
Second.
Dave's seconds. Any further questions or comments? Yep, Shelley?
I just got educated. I was asking, because where a certain section for gross income is not included in that, and we are just making the motion to accept the license, and the dollar amounts are sent to the state, so it's not a public record. So we might want to inform other people, maybe, that fill this out, that, just to make sure that's on the state level?
It's their choice whether they want to fill it or not. It's a state form. We don't make up these forms. They pull it off the state website to fill it out, to turn them out, so we don't.
Okay. So if they choose not to put it in until after we've approved it, that's fine?
Yep.
Okay. I just didn't know if they knew that they could do that, that everybody knew that they had the option. I don't know. Just. Sorry.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Next is a liquor license permit for the Mingo Springs Golf Course Incorporated.
Make a motion to accept the Mingo Springs Golf Course Incorporated, as presented.
Second.
Shelley's motion, Dave's seconds. Questions, comments? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we've got an event permit application from a local nonprofit, Rangely Health and Wellness, and the Rangely Chamber of Commerce are partnering up. And it is an event to be held on May 27 from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And it's a triathlon consisting of a 3.5-mile run, 1.5-mile kayak, and a 3.5-mile mountain bike ride to take place. It was at Start in the Town Park.
I make a motion to accept the event permit application for the Rangely Health and Wellness and the Rangely Chamber of Commerce to take the event to be on May 27, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Shelley's motion, Dave's seconds. Questions or comments? Sounds like great use of downtown in the park. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we have approval for two municipal quitclaim deeds. The first is for Paul and Patricia Rowe of 2225 Islewood Road.
Make a motion to accept the quitclaim deed for Paul and Patricia Rowe?
Second. Dave's motion, Shelley's seconds. Any questions or comments?
What is it for?
Basically, once, it's for unpaid sewer account. So when a lien is placed, filed at the registry of deeds.
It's released in the lien?
Yeah. It's a, yeah, once it gets past a certain age, I mean, then, you know, the tax collector can't legally discharge it. It has to have a municipal quitclaim deed. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. The second is for a municipal quitclaim deed to release Henry and Susan Phillips. It looks like in the deed, yeah, it might be a need to remove Katie, maybe, or is that the way it appears on the deed? Yes.
That's why, yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the municipal quitclaim deed for Henry and Susan Phillips of 25, 24 Kyle Road.
Second. Dave's motion, Shelley's seconds. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Under correspondence, we've got a letter of concern, and, I mean, Tim, where there aren't names or addresses, I mean, is, to respond to this, I mean, is this?
I'm not, I didn't respond to it. I just wanted you to be aware that it was sent to us, and it, because it was signed, I just wanted to put it out there so that, you know, just that it was sent in case somebody called you and said, "Hey, where the bum wants, did you get a letter?" Just wanted to make sure it was put in the book.
But we didn't receive any return address or anything like that to respond, or?
I --
This is how the team did to me.
That's how you, okay. So then basically, it's a, yeah, it's all right.
I just, it's just their concern.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Next, we have a letter from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, and this has to do with the Rangely Tavern, as they're calling it. The Maine Historic Preservation Commission is pleased to inform you that the Rangely Tavern was entered into the National Register of Historic Places on March 22, 2018 by the National Park Service, Department of the Interior, Washington, D.C. A certificate signifying this recognition will be forwarded to you at your request. So a big congratulations to Travis with his efforts of being entered into.
Did we send him a letter? A card? Congratulations?
Ken.
That would be nice. I'm sure a lot of work went into it.
All right, next, under Old Business, we've got the Downtown Revitalization Plan Update.
I don't, I don't have anything to, new to report on.
Okay. Sorry about that. It was the park update that, park update that we've got M&amp;H here for, and we've got a contract.
Yes.
That has been worked on and finalized with the help of M&amp;H and Tim and our legal team. Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
So first off, I'd like to thank Kenny, Eric Shub, I think is the name of the attorney. He, we spent a long time putting this together. We extracted a lot of parts out of the original contract. It was in the original bid package, added a bunch of stuff in. The pieces that you needed are the last four pieces, or five pieces, I handed out to you. Those are actually up, except there's one missing up there. But those are the exhibits that I mentioned in Article 1 and on the work, where it says Exhibits A, B, C, D, and, and I got a couple extra if anybody here wants to see what they are. The lawyers approved it. Everything's in there that I see that needs to be done, total, you know, the total value amount of 531. We have a letter of credit from M&amp;H, and everybody's done everything. We sat in the office, put a lot of hours in, and I recommend approval of the contract so that as soon as M&amp;H can begin, they can get started.
So we need a motion to approve the agreement between M&amp;H Construction, the contractor, and the Town of Rangely, and, actually, it's M&amp;H Logging LLC, also known as M&amp;H Construction, and the Town of Rangely. Yeah?
And it says, "Attention, Public Works Director." Who will be signing it? Who do we need to work?
It's going to be, it should be me. So you should give me authorization. Just on the last page, it says, "Owner of Town of Rangely, by." I would, I would sign it, and Kenny will sign it, and that's all he needs to sign it. So if you make your motion that you authorize Town Manager to sign the contract after you accept it, that'd be fine.
Okay. Well, good?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's them? All right. I make a motion. Jim?
I just have a question. I know this isn't part of the pack bid, but what about the dredging for the ramp? Is anything going to be?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm now with, what, what's his name?
Darrell.
Darrell, thank you. Darrell this morning, and so that, yeah. I've talked to so many people today when you bring them on. So I talked to Darrell this morning about that grant. So the grant is effective starting, it's like, you know, April till October, we have to do that. And we're assuming that as the lake gets lowered in the fall, that'll be the optimum time to do it. So we'll be, we're waiting to get this, we've got the grant, we're just waiting to get the engineering stuff to get started, and we'll do the engineering stuff, but it'll be done this fall, Jim, to wrap that all up. Thank you.
Do I need two motions for signature and approval? Or I can do it as well? All right. I make a motion to accept the agreement between the Town of Rangely and M&amp;H Logging and Construction, and giving authorization for our Town Manager to sign on our behalf.
Shelley's motion and Dave's seconds. Any other questions or comments?
I would, yeah.
Yes?
I'd just like to thank everybody who worked on this. This was labor-intensive, and I bet we've got plenty of hours in on this getting, plus all of what you've done to the full work, making some of the documents, and time on the phone, the lawyers, the conference calls, and everybody pushed really hard to get this completed, A to Z, so that we could have our liabilities taken care of, everything in the project that was redefined done, which is the exhibits you have, everything listed, A to Z. And when we thought we had it done, we went through it again with a fine tooth comb again, did it one more time. Everybody put a lot of effort, and I just want to comment on how well the contractor and the town, town attorney, everybody worked to get this done in time to get it so that M&amp;H could start when they needed to. So good job by everybody.
All right. All those in favor? That's unanimous. All right, super. Next, moving on to the Airport Improvement RFB Correspondence. What went out publicly last week was an invitation to bid for airport improvements, and after viewing it, I had some questions and was concerned because there, you know, it costs money to bid on this project, and we have an Article B22 that has appeared on our Selectmen's warrant without really any much discussion, public discussion about it. So I asked for, because it's all about town liability, and there are contingencies to this, still to this runway extension project that weren't, they weren't revealed in the invitation to bid, and the, and with a mandatory meeting coming up of this Thursday, April 5. So one of the things that really stuck in my mind was, you know, M&amp;H, I think Kenny, you spoke publicly at a meeting regarding all the expenses you went through with an engineer bidding on a project. I think you said M&amp;H was out $5,000 or $6,000 just to be able to bid on a project at the airport, and it's a lot of money, you know, for folks just to be able to bid on a project that may or may not happen. So what the attorney has suggested is certain disclosures that will be announced at the beginning of the meeting on the 5th, so it protects the Town of Rangely from any backlash if someone doesn't get selected or if there's any modifications made. Yeah, Rebecca?
I'd just like to add, just as an educational thing, if you look at the FAA general provisions, Section 20 and Section 30, it actually goes through, this is the AIP process. It's not just special for this project. It's every single AIP project. You go to bid first, then you submit the grant application. So it's, it's the same, but if you read those sections, you'll see that it clearly, clearly lays out that information clear.
So this would just also just justify that, you know, because we have a projected cost. That guy was hoping it would stay below, you know, 10 million or something like that, so this would just reinforce that with the application. Mark?
That invitation to bid said the documents were at the Town Office to review. Are they here yet?
They are.
Where?
They're in my office, so you can come, they're in my office, so you can come request a review of them. Or you can actually contact.
I bet they usually leave them on the table here, and someone can look at them and stuff.
Or you can contact the DuBois Inc., and you can purchase one of them.
Yeah, they're $75 to purchase online. If you want copies, they're $300 a set. So.
Plus a $100 shipping.
And a $100 shipping. You're going to read the fine print.
I don't know if the taxpayer that wants to look at them needs to buy them.
Right. Yeah, so if they could just be, you know, I mean, we've got, we've got those, you know, drawings up publicly, so we could just, you know, have that set out for the public.
In the past, they've always been set out on the table back in this room here.
Yeah, there's, there's.
And I have one question, if I may.
Yeah.
And not having seen the package, I was just reading the invitation to bid. I was wondering, is there a RFP portion of that in the bid package, or is it the one to follow? And what I'm getting is -- I have one question, if I may.
Yeah.
And not having seen the package, I was just reading the invitation to bid, I was wondering, is there a RFP portion of that in the bid package or is it the one to follow? And what I'm getting at, I was just curious if like an RFP, if there was a process or set a criteria for the evaluation and the awarding of the bid.
I have no idea.
So in FAA standards, it automatically goes to the lowest bidder unless there's something significant that they are missing in their bid. It automatically, by FAA statute or whatever, it goes to the lowest bidder.
Thank you.
So that's the only criteria, price?
As long as though they, as long as they meet all the.
The only criteria is not price. That was, it's actually laid out in the bid package.
They can't skip over anything that's required.
That's why I'm saying, something significant is left out.
So it's worked into the, that was my question, I guess.
Okay. Alright.
And I'd suggest if they cost rent at all, then they don't leave money on the table. They can be signed out from, Rebecca.
Any other questions?
I have one question regarding the airport. Can I go off from the normal RFP and ask you about the airport? In this process, it's a short one.
Yeah, if it's.
My question is, at one of the meetings previously, we had to talk about accepting the road closure. It's my understanding, and I've gone to a couple of, well, my legal attorney, and asked him, this town voted for the airport expansion project based upon the plan that was presented, which included the turnaround of the road being changed. Recently, we now have to come back and revisit this thing. Is this necessary? My lawyer says no.
The Board of Selectmen wasn't involved or consulted regarding the matter, so you don't have.
I missed that, first one.
The Board of Selectmen had no knowledge of this avenue of questioning regarding the road discontinuance, we thought. Yeah, so we weren't involved with that at all, so it wasn't discussed at the, at an Airport Commission meeting?
Yes.
And so.
Yes, it was also discussed at the public hearings.
No.
You sat right next to me, as a matter of fact, when we talked about the road being moved around.
Yeah.
Link the discussions to Borgent, had a lot of input regarding that, as did some of the. So my question is, why now are we going for another vote on the road?
Yeah, we don't, we don't know. Rebecca?
If I can, actually, it doesn't have to go to vote, but when we had a conference call, the Town Manager thought that we should put it back out. It just kind of covers the town, but legally, it does not have to go back to vote.
Thank you.
Yes.
So where that comes from is in our town ordinance, it says that the only ones who can discontinue the road are the citizens, the body. So that's, it was the attorney's feelings during the conversation that to cross our Ts and D and Is for legal purposes, we should put a warrant question in there specifically addressing, talking about that and at the same time talking about moving the road. And then in these emails that were in the packet at the public documents, you can see, I asked the lawyer, because she made a statement in one of her emails, even if the article is voted down, the board can still determine there's legal authority to relocate the road. You have, because it's on town property, the board can relocate the road? My concern was following our ordinance about discontinuing the road and then moving. That's how I got to the vote.
How do you consider this discontinuing the road?
The, we're discontinuing the, where it went.
Let me think. We're just moving it, we're not discontinuing it.
Correct. That's my concern. There's no discontinuance of this road. It's reconfiguring. And the ordinance that I read does not address reconfiguration. It addresses discontinuing, which means no longer a road. And again, I'm not trying to be adversarial, please.
No, the Board of Selectmen was not involved with this line of questioning, weren't involved with the attorney discussions. So I wish I could answer your question, but we, you know, we weren't, we weren't privy to this information.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Interestingly, it was approved when you had the vote, because in the vote, the vote said, to see if the town will do the extension via board, the way the engineers and designer. Part of that design was relocation, so the relocation was in the design and the design was approved by the vote.
Like I said, you know, apparently, our, you know, our attorneys were sought for their opinion and that, yeah. Jim?
I'd just like to say, you know, that is a state aid road from where you're gonna discontinue it until where your airport road goes in. Now, I don't know if that makes a difference or not. It's not really a town road. It's a state aid road, so.
You're absolutely correct, and the main DOT has signed up on us.
Well, I don't know about that, but I'm just saying.
Well, no, they're part of the bid process. They're part of the entire process.
I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know if that matters enough, but.
You're absolutely correct.
Alright, so we've got lawyers for a reason and it's, you know, it's in our town code that, you know, you know, I guess, okay, so, you know.
If you want the authority, according to her email, you saw that that I put in the packet, you can take that warrant question out tonight if you want. You can remove the warrant question from the warrant article. But after sending the ordinances to them and them reading everything, doing everything, they just felt better that it was, it would be all in the all-inclusive packet. But if you want to remove that, certainly feel free to take the vote tonight and take that warrant question out and.
Yeah, Larry?
My only question is, it would be a shame to slow down the progress of the last year if we have to wait for the warrant article in June, which would put our engineering format back 60 days, which if Steve's attorney is corrected to discontinue, and someone else, I mean, anyone can interpret a word 100 different ways. But I think the community did speak about moving the road. So there's something to be said for that, to strengthen the bid process on the 5th.
Yeah, I guess, I guess we should, we need to revisit that with, you know, with, you know, like I said, I mean, the Board of Selectmen wasn't involved and this is about liability and protecting the town. So someone doesn't come back and sue us and say that you didn't do that right, so you need to stop what you're doing.
What's the chances you get sued for not doing what you're supposed to do?
Well, why was it that the attorney consulted to begin with? I mean, like I said, we weren't.
I mean, an attorney's opinion is no better than my opinion. Everybody, it's an opinion. Everybody has one.
Yeah, it's illegal. Municipal attorneys do have specialty.
They don't have to, they're not bound by it though, in any sense.
No, well, I'm like, the reason I consulted attorneys, Joe was gone and I talked to Joe about it. And we had read our ordinance and Joe and myself did not have 100% answer. We wanted to get, just as we done with all our contracts, with all our agreements, with everything else we've done, send it to, we had a conference called Legal and Deordance to make sure we're stepping in the right direction. And after Kristen read the ordinance, she felt that this was the best course of action, so we followed.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to remove it, feel free to take that question off. We didn't do the title, right?
You gotta do it tight.
No, let's, Donnie's not here. And, you know, like I said, if the Board of Selectmen had been involved and had been educated throughout this process, it'd be different. But we weren't. And so we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting and see what the possible repercussions are. You know, it's been, the problem is, is the question's been read publicly at a budget hearing. Drawings attached and, yeah, so we'll, we can, we can.
The ordinance was put in place to discontinue roads and not have to maintain them anymore. Loom Lake Road is still gonna be Loom Lake Road. Instead of going here, it goes here. We're not discontinuing the road according to our ordinance.
Cindy, that's exactly right. I mean, you should call the lawyer back and say, maybe I'm misunderstanding what we're doing here. We're not discontinuing any road. We're relocating the road.
Yeah.
You're still gonna be able to use the road. It's still gonna be there, just gonna be in a different place.
Okay.
There are no taxpayers that are gonna suffer because of the road view. There are no properties that are not gonna be serviced because of the road being discontinued is what usually happens. It's just a relocation.
The discontinuance means we don't maintain it anymore.
No, discontinuance means that the town gives it back to whoever and it gets rid of the right of way. They're not doing that. All they're doing is relocating the road.
Yeah. Okay, alright, real quick before we move on, it's been, because we're, a lot of the same information is being said again and again. Rebecca?
I just wanna read what the attorney said. The attorney's clear what's going on. It says, "Even if the article is voted down, the board can still determine that there is legal authority to relocate the road since it is on town property."
So why confuse the voters with that question?
This is what we need.
In budget discussions earlier, we talked about the complexities of the voting booth. This particular article is gonna be confusing if they don't know all the background when they walk into that voting booth.
It was written by the attorney.
Yeah, well, there you go.
Can one selectman make a motion to strike yet?
We, well, we'll get, we'll get, we'll follow up with Kristen. Donnie will be back at our next meeting and, you know, we can, we can.
We can't address it once we do it tonight, so I'll make a motion to remove that question from the warrant. There's no other opportunity.
Is there a second? One, twice? Yeah. Motion fails due to a second because, you know, our attorney, for whatever reason, felt it, felt it needed its own warrant article, and we had already had the selectman's warrant out without that even being on there. So I don't know why, I don't know why the Board of Selectmen wasn't involved.
If it wasn't the Board of Selectmen involved in this email, the attorneys.
The selectmen saw the airport package, so every time.
Why is the chair contacting the attorney's direction to address the board?
I, because this was the purpose of sharing it at this meeting. Since the meeting was this, the chair has every right, as does any board member.
No, the chair does not have any more right than the rest of the board to spend the taxpayer money.
Any member of the board can contact the town attorney.
I don't believe that, Ken. We spent as much of an attorney fee as thousands I've been here. We could have built here for ourselves.
Okay.
I'm just saying. I'm sorry, but it's true. Contact.
You just send a call to the attorney, we straighten it all out.
Yeah.
This is just.
But is this gonna set it back any longer?
No, it won't set it back any longer. One more comment. Larry?
My only concern is that we shouldn't have a hitch on April 5th with your bid prospectus meeting. I would dare say that some of these contractors could spend maybe 50 grand to design this project for our engineers. Our engineers approved it. I would hate to think that there was a reason for them not to want to bid it. A contract, a job of this magnitude could be a guy's 13 or 14 month operation of that bid. So if he bids it to one and there's a hitch in it because of a simple right of way, it could create a problem for the bidders. That's all.
Well, I mean, the project isn't even funded yet, so.
But you take Kenny, not to mention him as well, a local contractor, that bids this. It could be their one-year job if they want it and they bid it wrong. It costs $50,000 to bid it. I'd hate to think that we had a hitch in a right of way that might stop them from getting the job. You follow me?
There's no, they voted on it. It's fully understood by 200 and some people that walk into the voting booth. They're making a lot of noise.
Okay, order.
It's a tactic this one.
Order. Yep. So, yeah, not sure how it got there, but it is and we'll need to address it.
I can contact the legal tomorrow.
Okay.
And your meeting Wednesday, assign the warrant, and you can bring us up Wednesday. I will have an answer for your one. And you can re-follow on Wednesday before you sign the warrant. But I did a following standard practices of how they're doing everything else.
Yeah.
And as, I followed through with getting a legal opinion on that type of project.
And I'd ask, because there's a reason why they wanted it in first, to go with the ordinance. So just make sure that she has, she knows everything. I mean, I just, I hate the email thing because it goes back and forth. I just assume the call, you make the phone call, and then you have the attorney's office sum up the whole thing. So then it's so much clearer and there's no room for interpretation because email is the worst thing for interpretation.
I'll have an answer for your one.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you, Tim. Cell tower lease agreement.
Did you vote on the RFP?
There's no.
Was that still a discussion?
No, there's no vote. It's, no, there's no vote. I mean, that went out, that just got put out. No one reviewed it. It just got put out. Alright, cell tower lease agreement with Verizon. And so this is the final cell tower agreement for approval. It's an 80-foot tower. And we'll have a rental agreement, rental agreement with Verizon that they will pay $20,808 a year to the Town of Rangeling for rental space on the tower. And the tower improvements will be at the sole cost of Verizon with an expected cost to Verizon of $260,000. And it looks like there will be space for an additional, for additional service at 60 feet.
I didn't know where, that's all. I just did it here.
Right here! Not literally right here. Yeah, it's just, yes. Same, yes, same thing, taller.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right here at the town office?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Verizon approached, approached the town last year. Yeah.
Any provisions for getting rid of them? They don't pass like the TDP people do?
It's, uh. We'll remove their dish.
Are there any provisions for them removing the tower in the event that they fail to pack? So we don't have that debris up here.
Well, it's, it's an existing tower, so we've got our fire tower. Tim, you can explain it better. They.
So they're gonna take down our 60-foot antenna tower that we have now.
Which is where?
Right on the back of the fire station.
60 feet?
Yep, that's it.
Is it light on that?
It had one, but it burned out. Anyway, so they're gonna put that out. They're gonna put that up there. And as soon as they turn it on, the minute they turn it on, they will sign the tower and all the equipment belongs to us, turn it over to us.
So what does that do for the community? Main street turns out on cellular. Where does it, where does that help to?
It'll shoot all the way across, well, it's going this way behind us. Then it shoots across to Manor Road and goes across the lake that way and goes across to about, if I remember the charts, probably above the dentist's office and shoots over across South Shore Drive that way.
So we've picked up some roaming area?
What's that?
Picked up area we don't have now?
Yeah, a lot of that, and it goes all the way over to Kenny's side of the lake on South Shore Drive over there. They'll hit all that hill, that ridge on the backside over there as well. And it gives them downtown, it gives them both sides of that. We will own the tower. As soon as they build it and they sign the agreement, the tower is turned over to us and all the equipment. If they don't renew the contract in five years, the only thing they would take off of the cellphone is take that out.
I just wanna see the debris field that we have at the airport.
Yeah, so, so that would be it.
It's gonna be expensive to remove it.
So the debt spots that you have with USA and I, you'll still have because this is always for Verizon? Is that correct? You'll be roaming on all, everybody that has USA will be roaming. Unless USL even buys space like they did bought mine.
I, I did, I made contact with USL. I left messages, three or four people that you'd asked me to. So I attempted to follow through on that and I couldn't get anybody calling back.
Sounds great.
I made, I made a huge effort to get the USL to see if they were interested in doing this project, and they never returned any of my calls.
So I believe they have to share space on the tower, but it's limited to how much they have to share.
Yeah, there's, there's space to share, so.
But this will give you 80,000 plus, 80,000, 85,000 after four years and the new cell tower in the back. So even if they just continue it five years, it wouldn't change.
Yeah.
You'll be getting income annually off this.
Yeah, Harold?
The dedicated revenue, is that going into the town's communication account or where's that going?
That will go typically into the, into the general, into the general fund for the.
Don't you think it'd be smarter to upgrade the town's communication equipment to keep up to current standards?
Well, we need.
Replacing repeaters and things like that?
Or to this building, since it costs us a fortune.
Someone would need to lay out, you know, the, how the money would propose to be spent so the voters could, you know, vote on. But it's, it's general revenue at this point. But it's re, it's general revenue at this point.
They can renew it after five years, probably.
What's that?
They can renew it after five years if the two guys want it, right?
Yep.
Pretty good money.
They'll change the price after five years.
Twenty thousand, yeah, they pay good rent.
So how do you-
Yes, Mike.
How do you make a motion to let rent money to come back into the building since it's at the building or something like that? Would that just be a letter or would that be?
Well, I mean, it would, it would be a-
Just so it doesn't get lost, that's all.
Yeah, no, it'd be something that the, that the town manager would, you know, would bring up during, you know, during the next budget cycle or whenever they get done. There's no money yet.
Right, right.
There won't be any money the first year because they are building a taller tower than they wanted. So there won't be any money till a year after they're in service. All right, so we need a, Shelley?
And the, um, the town attorney has reviewed it.
Correct.
And given the blessing, because that's what we were waiting for.
Yeah, town attorney reviewed it. And also, just so people know, this isn't an awful idea. They've done this in Yamas Fire Department. They've done it, they've done it in Polon Fire Department. They had these agreements in these towers as well, so they're worth good for public safety.
They were.
Yeah. All right, a motion to accept the communications tower lease agreement.
The town manager to sign.
And is this something that you need to sign to?
Tim, you'd sign that, right?
No, yes, I can sign it.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the communications tower lease agreement to, between the town of Rangelley and Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems of Allentown Inc., D B A Verizon Wireless, and giving the town manager permission to enter the agreement.
Shelley's motion. And Dave's seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And it's unanimous. I'm gonna cross that one off for us. All right, moving on to new business, current airport lease rates. So Rebecca, you wanna speak to that?
I'll start, and then I'll let, um, the Airport Commission actually, where you can have Steve look into it. Um, so currently, um, the lease agreement says, said rentals shall be paid annually and shall be subject to recapping every two years and even number of years at a rate of five percent. So it's subject, it doesn't have to. The Airport Commission voted to not increase it. Um, and the reasons they voted to not increase it is because Rangelley is significant, significantly higher in their rates than comparable airports. And I will let Steve talk to that, since Steve was the one who looked into it.
Thank you. The, um, the Airport Commission asked me to look into this, and what I did was, um, I took a list of, um, well, I'll make it back up. I got in touch with Augusta, and they told me all, they gave me a list of all the municipal airports in the state of Maine. And then I asked a couple of questions. What are similar size population densities? Um, we are the highest elevation airport in the state of Maine, one of the highest in the eastern seaboard. Uh, so we have some unique, um, issues to deal with here, but, uh, so they gave me a list of everything. And what I came up with is Rangelley, you'll see at the top of the line on your paper, Bethel, Jackman, Greenville, Norridge, Waukenwood, Cassett. There are a number of others, many, 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 many smaller, and a few bigger. Uh, the few bigger ones, I'll give you an example, Oweshead. Uh, we don't even compare in terms of aircraft volume, um, et cetera. These are the ones we come closest to comparing. So if you have any questions based upon the results you see on that sheet, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
So have you, have you always charged by the square foot?
Yep. So for our large hangers, actually, the large hangers aren't on there. It's point three five seven for square feet. And I think Bethel... Which one, which one is the large hanger?
Um, the large hangers, you see T for T hangers and L for large hangers. If you go down to Greenville, you see they have one large individual large hanger, which is comparative in size to Larry, Larry's hanger and George Dunn's hanger. Um, and you'll see what they charge. A number of these places, Bethel in particular, I had lengthy discussions with her town manager there. She was very helpful. They're in the process of revisiting this, just as we are. Uh, they have chose to reduce their rates. And they have Sunday River. They've got lots of other things going on there. So again, very, very light community we have here. And what they're experiencing is light traffic. Uh, hangers are very expensive, as you may or may not know. And they want to keep their airport viable, so they're not trying to outsize the capability of these people. And you may think, well, if you get on an airplane, you can afford it. These are expensive. I mean, there's no way, two ways around it. Uh, and there's a lot of restrictions relative to an airport hanger. So if you have some other questions, I, Rebecca, I'm sure I can get through it, but I'm happy to answer.
Thank you for, thank you for sharing.
So we just asked that you guys go along with the Airport Commission recommendation to keep the rates, to not increase the rates, and keep them as they currently are.
All right, so we need a motion to motion to keep the, um, airport lease hanger rates the same.
Make a motion to follow the recommendations of the Airport Commission and keep the, the rates the same for the hangers.
Dave's motion, Shelley's seconds. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Next up is a letter from the Department of Transportation regarding the hot mix asphalt overlay. So, um, Tim, you've had direct communication with them?
Yeah, basically what this is, is as they stop the road project on sixteen Puzzle Street, which will have exactly sixteen all the way up to Reddington Road. They're gonna bring in heavy equipment. They just need a permit for us to issue, allow them to do that over our roads. The only road they're really gonna rule is the state road, so there's, and talking to Kristen, there was no need to have a, to have a, um, deposit or, or to have an overlay cost or anything like that, which they, they sometimes will do, or we can, we can have that money ask roll by the D O T and so forth. But the road isn't our road. It's their road. If they tear it up, they're gonna have to fix it, so. The only thing you want to do is basically this first page of this agreement is to allow it to go through town. And that's really what they're looking for, so. So I'd buy the municipal official, so that's decided by you. That's all it is. There, there are no other roads. I mean, they're gonna, the construction inside again, Main Street, Puzzle Street, going up Puzzle Street into the corner, all the way up sixteen to Reddington Road.
What are they doing?
Overweight.
That's all? So they're not doing anything with the curbing?
Overlaying Puzzle Street and then reconstructing sixteen from Dallas out. Making it a class A road or class one road, whatever they classify that, so they can haul over during posted times.
Should we make that a referendum article? Slow this one down.
No, no, I don't think so.
Not to second you. Yeah, Shelley?
So, we're, Mr. Kill, we still have that agreement of so many trucks going through town, correct?
Yeah, I think it's seventy-nine trucks a day.
All right, so do you need a motion, or are we just signing this up?
No, I need, I need a motion for you to approve and sign that, and then just authorize.
So you need an, a motion to accept the application for permit from Maine D O T? Right? Make a motion to, um, accept the application for permit from Maine D O T that would allow them to bring heavy equipment over the limit, over the roads.
Shelley's motion?
Second.
And Dave's seconds? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Moving on to the town manager's report.
I have submitted new senior reports from C E O, the economic development coordinator report, and file a financial report. Police chief was away at the FBI academy, I think, right?
I'm not sure.
Oh, bad. He was in a police training for a week, so he didn't get-
All last week?
Yeah, he didn't get submitted in, so. And the Sirens Public Works, uh, they've been working on, um, road stuff. Talking to Keith, he's been working on many projects. He's been doing the, um, the, working with Wright Pierce on the SCADA project, trying to get that finalized. So we put that up to bid, and we didn't have any bids back, so we're researching as to how to rewrite that again to get that out. Keith's doing that. Transfer station, I've been, you know, hauling trash, and everything else is working. And I've been busy writing contracts.
Good, that's, yes, you have.
What's that SCADA thing at the frequent plane or whatever? What is that?
It's, it was approved last year. So right now, in a nutshell, when we have alarms, the alarms are at the pump stations. They did, it's a, it's a manual dialer, dials, the cellphone, and they have to go up and check it. So this would bring, all the alarms would go online electronically, and they'd be able to go in and actually look at their cellphone, go in, look at the screen, see what's wrong, at the pump station if it's overflowing or if it's failed. Because every time it overflows at a pump station or something like that happens, then we get a fine from D E P. So this is the next technology net level, working with that. Calendar? Clark, you said you had something for calendar?
I do. Um, working with Laura Reynolds, trying to coordinate the quarterly meeting with the broadband update that they wanna do. May tenth works, and I need to know from this board if that works. Otherwise, we may end up with two separate meetings, trying to put it all into one meeting. So does May tenth work?
Eyes open. Looks open. May tenth, that would be here?
It's actually a Rangelley plantation.
Okay. I don't, I don't see any context. Quiet.
At six?
Yes.
At Rangelley plantation, okay. Add that to Donnie's info.
You have this already, but a little bit too. I have submitted to you my formal resignation as both town manager and fire chief. My letter clearly states that I, after much consideration, decided to accept another offer of full-time employment. It had better benefits and compensation package. My last day will be May eleventh, full-time. Um, and as I said, I'd be willing to work out. But, you know, working, staying on part-time until I relocate later on in the summer as fire chief until we hire one. So the two motions I'd like to ask you to do now is accept my resignation and then give me permission to go ahead and start the process to hire a full-time fire chief position. Um, the sooner the better because I should be on that, on that process, knowing the, the employee. Um, where the fire chief reports directly to the board of selectmen is really not a manager issue. It's, and when they hired me, it was the fire department, there was a committee formed from the fire department, two selectmen, the current town manager, and a current fire chief. So I'd like to keep, I think that's a good practice. I think it's extremely important that the fire department has say in, in who they're going to get. And it's important that I, I know a lot of, of the people and how to write the job application, so it, or the job criteria, so it fit here. Um, this job is unique. The fire chief's job is extremely unique here because not only am I the fire chief. When I was a fire chief in, in other places, it was an administrative position. I could sit behind a desk because I had full-time staff to go on calls, and you don't have that here. So the fire chief is the day firefighter. I also clean the trucks, fix the floors, and fix the equipment, tinker with stuff, as well as do the reports, the budget, and everything else. So the big aspect of this job is understanding that the fire chief is really a working fire chief. It's not a administration fire chief. And that someone will have to A, relocate here, and B, know that this is a working job. That there are times during, during the calls, when Captain Mikey and Harold and the other guys, he'll tell you, during the day when we didn't have people around, I take the trucks. I gear up and I take the trucks. Um, you know, so I think it's important that the board understands and everybody knows that, um, this is a working chief's job. It's not a administration behind-the-desk job. And the other part of that is, um, making sure that we hire a fire chief that's a state instructor. You've gotta have that component because, you know, last year we trained on eighteen hundred and thirty somewhat hours of certified training that I can certify. And so you need to have that component, or you're gonna have to pay to have an instructor up here. So having an instructor, fire instructor one certified, fire officer one certified, fire fighter one, all those requirements will have to be into the, which all right. So I'd like to have two motions, one to accept my resignation, and the second one to authorize me the status process to fill the position.
We don't wanna make a motion.
Well, I don't if you don't accept it.
I don't have to.
He's got a start date. What is your start date with the town of Harrison?
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth, so we're, break that Monday.
Where's your contract paid without?
Right here.
I have another year, I have another two years to go on that contract, so.
Yeah.
And, and it wasn't an easy decision. Um, I thought about it for a week. I looked at everything. I talked to my family. You know, the biggest aspect of this is this must be almost two hours close to my family. I'm thirty minutes from our brother's house. So, that would be a challenge.
Sacrifices have to be made, Tim.
Yeah, and I, and it's not, you know, yeah.
We're talking about the other way.
Yeah, the other way, yeah.
Heck, I commute to Florida because that's easy to out there.
Yeah, I know.
Larry, what use is playing?
Get your pad slices, Tim.
Yeah.
Then you know.
Oh, goodness, yeah.
Now you kept hanging with the same.
All right, next item on the agenda.
I did gyms.
All right, I, um, I'll make a motion to accept, um, Tim Pellerin's resignation as, uh, town manager with his last day to be Friday, May eleventh. That's, that's, that's separate, isn't it?
Well, it's fire chief.
No, it's both.
You can do them together.
You, I can do them together, okay, and, uh, and his resignation as our, uh, town fire chief.
Second.
With great, great regret.
Definitely.
Well, just a, I mean, just a comment. I, you know, we've, people have commented, you know, we have had some turnover with the town managers, and, um, probably the last four that I can recall have been under less than desirable circumstances. And I can't think of a better way for Tim to, um, to leave the town. A, under his own, under his own conditions. In such a positive light, um, and leaving the town in such a good, uh, turnkey position. It's a, it's, it's a luxury we're very grateful for, Tim. And, uh, you know, this was a very personal decision for Tim. We didn't, we didn't have a chance to talk him into staying. He made that decision on his own, and, um, we're thankful we had you as town manager for as long as we, as long as we had you, Tim.
Thank you.
I wish I had my list of all the things that, that we've done.
We'll write a letter. We'll write a letter to the editor and the board knowing.
The website. I mean, we've probably grown with you as town manager the fastest, and under your leadership, and it's been very, very appreciative. Thank you.
Well, it's been a pleasure.
How about extra twenty grand?
But I also get it. Family is first. I also get the part, family is first.
Yeah.
And we have to be considerate of that.
Yeah, we do.
And your decisions, although we may not be happy about it. Because you had to think, thought about it a lot, because your heart and soul has been Rangelay since you've gotten here, and we've seen that, as well, everyone else has seen it. That's why they're fighting for you to stay.
Yeah.
We appreciate all you've done.
Yeah, Harold?
What you've seen with, with the town in the last year and a half that he's been town manager, we've seen it in the last six years with the fire department. We've grown leaps and bounds. For me, we're compliant with everything. The equipment is top-notch, the training is phenomenal. We owe him a gratitude, too, as firefighters.
I agree. This is something that should have happened. It should have been a better offer made. And when you've got something that's good, you need to take care of it. And that's why, coming down the road, I hope the selectmen will... Number one, we need our full-time fire chief back, and I hope, because the volunteers need that. So I hope you take that into consideration. And when you do hire a town manager and other officials, make sure you pay them enough, and give them enough, and reward them enough, that you keep them. They're doing a great job for you. And Tim has done a great job for us.
Yeah, certainly has. It's been an amazing partnership. I mean, Tim's one that really likes to get things crossed off the list. So, you know, the board of selectmen being able to discuss goals, and things that need to happen, and to have a town manager that's responsive and works as a team is, it's been a wonderful gift. And it's been a great partnership.
So what is the number, Kim?
No, we didn't have the opportunity. Tim, Tim made this decision on his own, and delivered the news, so.
Well, this, this, as all, you know, I had a death in my family, and that had a profound effect on me.
Yeah.
And this puts me close to my family.
Yeah.
Though I'm leaving what I consider family here, which are firefighters in the town, which I do love the town. I love the people great, but the fire department up here is my second family. They've been great to me. It was a tough decision, but it's what I think I...
So what's the number?
Probably all good, you're firing.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, grudgingly? And that's unanimous.
And what happens if you didn't accept it?
Town of Harrison, Town of Harrison has his start date. So next, we need to make a motion to fill the full-time fire chief's position.
Make a motion to... Do we have Anna Lee? Do it. The HR, to consult our HR?
No, I'll do it.
Okay, I thought she did the job thing.
No, I gotta do it, because it's fire related. I'll give it, run it by her. She'll review it for all the EOE stuff, and all that stuff. And then I'll put it back out, like I did, you know, we did with the police stop and so forth. But I'll give it to her to review, make sure it's all legal, and then we'll put it out.
I make a motion for the town manager to, slash, fire chief, to move forward with seeking an application. No, what are we?
Seeking...
Hiring a full-time firefighter.
Hiring a full-time firefighter.
Fire chief.
Fire chief.
That then becomes the final decision of the selectmen.
Yes.
So are we recommending a recommendation?
No, the department would do the hiring committee thing.
But the board's one who'd have to prove, find...
Correct. They don't have the authority to hire a position.
Board is the only one who has the authority to hire.
Shelley's motion?
Second.
Dave's seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question for his interview.
Yeah.
All of us want to echo, I know, the sentiments that everybody says about Tim Pellerin, but I have a question. Do you do exit interviews?
Always. Anna Lee conducts exit interviews on every, on everyone that termites, you know, when they're, when they're through working in the town.
So HR does it, not the board of selectmen?
Yes, that's right.
Everything's disseminated to you?
As she sees...
Disseminated to the town manager.
Yeah, it's, yeah. If it's, I mean, the town manager supervises most employees, so the information would go to the town manager. Whatever's, whatever is suitable for the board of selectmen, which would be fire chief and town manager, that information would come back to us.
It would be my recommendation only, that given that the town manager reports directly to you all, that you should do the exit interview and find out why Mr. Pellerin's on his way to another town. I think it'd be vastly important to help you move forward in your deliberations and governing of your exit employee.
Under oath, Tim. Under oath.
Under oath.
Next, there's an announcement that the Rangelay Water District has a special district meeting, followed by a public trustee meeting, to approve a nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-seventy-five-dollar bond. And this is on April fifth at five-thirty PM.
Where, where is it?
It is at the water district offices, fifteen Reservoir Road, though I think they've renamed that. Yes, very.
On that subject, what is the likelihood of the town of Rangelay ever becoming a majority of the water district, so that we could reduce that hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar water bill? I think that's more than their total necessary budget. But if the town of Rangelay actually was, this was not quasi, but it was in fact town of Rangelay, that's how it works. Has anybody ever reviewed the cost savings that... Nobody even really knows who owns it?
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, the water district does set its hydrant rental rate, you know, subject to PUC guidelines. But as far as us acquiring the water district, I'm not even sure if the, if the, you know, the question would be, well, do the water bills pay to run the water district?
Has anybody ever asked for a cost analysis of their costs of operation versus the overhead and analysis of revenue?
I, yeah, not, not since... Jim, do you recall any discussion in your history?
They did it back when, when they dissolved from Russell. They went to a public
Right.
thing, and it was found, I believe, at the time, that it was better to let it go public, because of all the maintenance and whatever that...
But currently, I see an awful lot of overlap in what they're doing. Buildings, equipment, and whatever, which could certainly be done by the municipality. If that's reflected in the PUC raise, we might wanna have a look at that. Because they could just tell the PUC that it costs three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars to get around, so we are allowed to charge you four percent of that. Well, that doesn't necessarily mean that for three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars, that number. Correct?
The problem is, is when the district was formed, the district makes up several municipalities. The town of Rangelay can't own the district, because parts of it is in Dallas, and parts of it, and some of the assets are in Sandy River Plantation. So they have to become a multi-quasi municipal entity. And the legislature basically voted and formed the water district. And it would take, and act on the legislature.
Well, they, they did just, they purchased property, you know, in Dallas Plantation to protect aquifers and whatnot. That's just been over the last couple of years. So they do own assets that don't, that aren't. That's a good point.
Well, they've got a water line that goes all the way to Sandy River. There's Rangelay Plantation. I mean, there's several towns there.
Yes, Jim?
Just like I said, I mean, it's, the people that are under it, they can control it if they want to.
That's right.
So, I mean, anybody that's under the water district, they're not happy with what's going on. They either tell the trustees, or they vote, or whatever.
Right, so if you're under the water, if you can vote for the trustees, but the trustees, you're a co-trustees on a water company, why the hell, they have all kinds of power. You give them all kinds of power. They can go borrow money, they can do all kinds of things. They can buy land, they can do all kinds of things. But that's the way the legislature set up the water district.
I'm only asking, there seems to be a fair amount of waste in that one. With the water bills that we're getting as a municipality, and what Rangelay is paying, Aquastic is paying Rangelay to monitor ours, we're talking like a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year we pay them. We certainly ought to have someone on that board seeing where they're spending that money.
Right, I mean, the town is one of the major users through the hydrant rentals.
Through the hydrant rentals.
I think we should have somebody, some representation on that board somehow.
It seems to be a lot of waste there. For me, I fight, I fight it low, and I can't remember the person that was, I can't remember his name. He used to work for CMP. He actually threw me out of there, the building, the diamond.
Dennis Markey.
Okay, hold up.
Burne Bean, Burne Bean. But it's just, it seems to me there's a fair amount of overlap, and I don't know how you can fix that. But the only way that you're gonna reduce that hydrant rental, and you might help me reducing my operators' fees that I pay them, is to visit their budgets and find out if it's legitimate.
They're audited every year. We do it their own.
Yeah, so I can find new cabotis, sure.
But just remember, as a, as a user of the water district, anybody that's on it, even the town included, you can file a complaint, or you can call the Public Utilities Commission, because they regulate the water districts. If you have a concern of how they're running their money, or how they're doing things, you can file a complaint with the PUC, and they will have to investigate it. And they'll tell you whether what they're doing is proper or not.
Tricia?
There is nomination papers available for water district trustee. Can you see me?
You can't be a selectman to be on the water.
No, you can't. No, but you could be Dennis Markey.
And be on the water district.
I live in the district. But I would do is, I would get somebody that's interested, knowledgeable about it, and, and call the PUC, and ask them if you'd like to have, you know, a report of them.
Yep, does someone else have their hand raised? All right, yep. I mean, the hydrant rental fee is, is, is included in the fire department budget and shared amongst, you know, amongst all, all plantations that the fire department serves.
They don't like it either.
Well, the thing of it is, people think, well, we don't have any hydrants in our town. Well, it's, it's the fire department's access to water. You know, that's what the hydrant rental fee is. They gotta fill their trucks up with water to fight fires in Dallas Plantation and Rangelay Plantation. So it's access and use of the water.
It's an insurance policy. That water is there, available, ready to fight.
Yeah, you're not trying to break a hole through, you know, Musluk McGonig Lake to get water pumped through.
Well, you can go to the legislature and get the law changed. The law says that the water company can charge up to forty percent of their operational budget to fire protection.
Yeah.
And so they just take half their budget, almost half their budget, and assess it to you for hydrant rental.
And we have no control over that spending. That's what my original question was.
Right.
All right, so, so spread the word. There's an opening. All right. What else have we got left?
That's all I have on the town manager report, I don't check.
All right. Any information the board wishes to share? Number eleven. Oh, yeah, our next, our next board of selectmen's meeting is, has been scheduled for April twenty-third. Yeah, Donnie's away, so we had to bump it the next, the next week, so.
What time is the Wednesday meeting, April?
What time, where, where are you going to be?
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
I'm probably gonna be between my house packing and the bank in Rangelay.
All right, so you'll be local. Dave, are you gonna be local Wednesday to meet in the afternoon?
Yeah.
All right. When's it convenient for you, Tricia? Fourth. Okay, four o'clock?
Four, that's for you guys.
Yeah.
They talked to you today. Well, that's all right. Donnie will be able to, they'll get answers, and then Donnie will be back.
Hold on, I mean, I can just...
Wednesday the fourth?
Wednesday the fourth, Dave, yeah.
What time?
What time?
Four o'clock.
Four.
That way Tricia's not hanging out unnecessarily. Okay. All right. All right, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to MRS, MRS A Title I, Chapter thirteen, Subchapter one, Section four oh five six A, for the purpose of discussing personnel. Dave, I've got a second. All those in favor?